All right, welcome. I hereby call this city council meeting Tuesday, April 1st, 7:00 PM. To order, it will span and do pledge allegiance. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so a little intro. If you wish to speak during the public comment portion of today, please complete a request to speak card and turn it into our city clerk at this time. It is highly recommended that you seek resolution of a complaint through the appropriate city department by scheduling a meeting with a council member or city staff before bringing the matter to the city council. So for attendance, we have everyone here, so we don't have to deal with that. Uh, let's go right to approval of minutes. Joint City Council Workshop with Planning Commission Minutes.
I'd like to move to approve the Joint City Council Workshop Planning Commission Minutes from 2/27/25.
One second.
I got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Council Workshop Minutes, March 4th, 2025.
Move to approve the minutes from March 4th, 2025, City Council Workshop after then.
One second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Council Meeting Minutes, March 4th, 2025.
Move to approve minutes, March 4th, 2025, regular meeting is presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the City Council Special Meeting Minutes, March 10th, 2025.
I move to approve the minutes of March 10th, 2025, special meeting is presented.
One second.
In a second, is there any discussion?
Was it March 10th or March 11th?
It was the Monday.
I don't know. It says March 11th on the notes. It says 3/11/2025.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Financial reporter.
Hey, you have two months worth. Last month I was at the Government Finance Officer Association's conference, uh, so I was not here for the council meeting. Um, but we have been having a lot of computer issues today. It sounds like across town as well. I just noticed that this printed a wrong date at the top for January. It should be 2025 and not 2024. And the first sentence reverted back to last month as well. Everything else I reviewed is correct. Apologize for that, but computers have been a very weird day. Um, for that first sentence, our general property taxes. As of January 31st, 2025, we were at 101% of our taxes collected. We actually had $13,000 more than what we budgeted. So we haven't met that already in January. Um, our building fund is the only one that for this month was low on revenues. Not a lot of permits being purchased then. Of course, by February, that changes completely. Uh, but we did have big payouts where we paid out the building department IGAs with the local jurisdictions and to the state. So that's why that big expense in the building department. Any questions on Januaries? Okay, so move on to Februaries. Uh, so by February, um, we have about $26,000 over collected in property taxes from what we budgeted. So, um, it's about 1% above our budget amount. Um, the general fund was the recipient of multiple awards, and so we saw a big increase in the revenues received. Uh, the majority of them are from CRES III and CRES II. Uh, so we are very thankful that that is there, and it's really helping us with all these infrastructure projects. And as you've noticed these last couple of years, we've really been working on a lot of infrastructure, and it's a lot in due to these funds that we receive. Um, the Geo Bond Fund also received $212,000. Um, that also came from CRES, so they have it built into their agreements that these industries will pay their Geo Bond portions. Um, they send the payment to the CRES Board, and then the CRES Board distributes it out to those entities that have Geo Bonds, and so our portion was the 212,000. So that goes into the Geo Bond Fund, and then that amount goes strictly to pay towards our Geo Bond payment. And our next one will be in June, so we'll make two payments a year for that. Do you have any questions for February?
So the payment in February that's under the receipt for the Geo Bond is the amount from the CRES?
Uh, yes, with a little bit of interest. The 212 of it is from CRES.
Okay, okay.
And then the slight difference in the interest.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Interest rates are holding up fairly steady, though.
They are, um, because of all the newly introduced tariffs or um, the fans are playing it safe and not wanting to move interest rates too much to try not to make things teeter totter the wrong way. So, yeah, they previously had anticipated them coming down more than they have been, but because of the tariffs and the new administration, they're kind of playing it safe. So good for us, for our reserve again. Yeah.
You want to ask any questions or comments? Better group, do you have any comments you would like to share?
I don't know.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I'm trying to read.
I know you're reading, but I want to make sure if you had an opportunity comment, if you did.
I'd like to get better glasses.
Mr. Hammond, introductions.
Yes, and so we have a new code enforcement out of control, Norma Ayella. And if you want to stand, Norma.
Keep them out.
Junior Drago, uh, Public Works Director, if you guys can just stand for a second. So I don't even want to guess how long these two individuals have been in the community. And it's not that you have to have, this is a prerequisite, but it is certainly just such a powerhouse when you have those already built-in connections, that you have the knowledge of the community, and then you're just building that moving forward. So truly grateful for these two stepping up, uh, willing to take these jobs. The animal control is not a favorite for a lot of people. Um, for code compliance, that is a big deal. Um, so really, it's huge. And, um, I may get just a little emotional, but really, uh, we're always stepping in. I mean, just huge shoes to fill for Raul, but I cannot express just how cool it is that he's willing to come out of retirement, um, and help the city. So again, welcome both. Thank you guys for stepping up and doing this. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I have a question. So is Chief Corpus not, not doing it either?
Nope.
You are the one. Because you were doing it together, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And Norma does a very nice job.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go right to our public comment. We'll go to pre-arranged presentations. Mark County Schools. No, Sam Gordenman's here, right? Yeah, it's your turn.
I'll wait, you if you want.
No, go ahead. You're right there. Are you, so.
Use your big voice.
Yeah, you have to use your, as loud as you are in class. Pretty quiet in class. How about recess voice? So when you talk, you can talk variety to their, direct their, right to their, okay? Good luck to you.
Of course. There you go.
Hello, Gorden City Council. Thank you for having us. My name is Mason Sauce.
And my name is Alvin. We are third grade students from Sam Gordenman Elementary. Need here to share with you some exciting news going on in our school. April is the month third graders take the OSHAS test. This is a big time of the year for us. We have been working hard to prepare for the Oregon State test all year long. Please wish us luck, and if you know or have, if you have or know a certifier, maybe they deserve a spot in your school. Parent teacher conferences, so to speak, this is a great time to check in on our students and celebrate all of the learning and growing we have done throughout the year. Make sure if you have a student at SPE, you have accomplished times scheduled. We can't wait to share success with you. April 10th is Dear Day. On this day, we drop everything and read. To celebrate our love of reading, join us in taking some special time now of the day and sitting down with a good book. Every Sunday, we'll be answering conference at SPE. We are excited to welcome in springtime a special song we've done so many days practicing. Please hold your beans and clear your schedule to come down and sing spring into the year with us. Our next theme day is April 25th. All throughout these are optional student days. We strongly encourage all students to come and take part in the exciting theme activities planned by teachers and more. This is a great time to explore ideas and create projects we don't always have the opportunity to do. Remember, students show up, show up at 11:00 AM and leave at the regular 3:30 PM time. At the end of the month, we will be having our monthly community awards assembly at Sam Gordenman. This is a special time to celebrate, celebrate those students who are going above and beyond. You know, a student out of the month, be sure to congratulate them on a good, uh, a job well done. Babies and parents are always welcome to attend to celebrate their students on April 24th at 3:00 PM.
Thank you for letting us speak to the community about all of the exciting things happening at Sam Gordenman Elementary.
Nicely done. Sam Gordenman's put Windy River to shame. Been the last couple, couple times Windy River has been to, been at, at 10. So nicely done, Sam Gordenman. I'll have to share that with my wife, too. She's whipping me up. So, thank you, Sam Gordenman. All right, pre-arranged presentation. Mark County Assessor. They were really loud, too. That was nice.
They didn't use the mic, even though it was right in front of them. It's not super.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to have me come speak, Brandon, uh, a month or so ago, and, and wanted me to come give a short presentation. Um, when I showed up tonight, Brandon said, oh, we moved it to next month, um, but April fooled me. I just want to let Brandon know that, you know, paybacks. So my name is Mike Gorman. I am a county assessor, tax collector. Um, I live in Heffner, lived in Morrow County my whole life. So I know some of you, not all of you, um, and please feel free to stop me and ask questions. Um, during the presentation here, it should take 10, 15 minutes, so we're ready. Uh, I'm going to start out with just kind of a big picture, countywide, uh, prior year, last year, uh, values and taxes. So, um, county had a, just shy of $4 billion taxable value last year, a market value of $11 billion. Um, and then the difference is because of large industrial exemptions, like you've heard of CRES, Enterprise Zone, and SIP. So, uh, 1.10, 1.2 billion dollars of exempt value for SIP and just short of 6 billion for Enterprise Zone. Go ahead.
But that number grows every year, um, for how much the taxable income is versus how much goes into CRES?
Well, it just depends. Um, you know, uh, a lot of that increase in the market value has been attributable to Amazon's most recent investments in the county. Um, because when they build a facility, it's in the billions, you know, at least 2 billion, 2 billion per campus. So, um, and then they get, you know, uh, property tax exemptions, um, up to 15 years. So it's going to take a few years before they come out of those exemptions for that taxable value to start creeping up towards what the market value is. And then over time, depreciation happens, too, on the market value side. So what, you know, in year one, when it was worth 2 billion, in year 15, it may only be worth 1.3 billion or something, so.
But they're on the, probably at that point, they're probably fully on the tax rule?
Yeah, after 15, which is, yeah, absolutely.
And all along the 15 years, that number, the tax number keeps going up a little?
It does. Um, I'll get into, we dropped a little bit this last year, and I'll get into that here in just a second. So, um, uh, total certified property taxes select, to collect countywide, uh, 57 million and change. That's for all taxing districts, all the cities, the county, all fire districts, cemetery districts, school district, everything. Um, Morrow County gets, uh, about 16 million of that 57 million dollars, um, as a district. Uh, you know, and property taxes are due November 15th, and that's when we take the bulk of our payments is, you know, the, the first couple of weeks in November. Um, as of March 20th, when I put together this presentation, we had, uh, out of the 57 million, just about 1 and 3/4 million left to collect of current year taxes. Um, and then 2.6 million for all years. There's some delinquent taxes from prior years. Uh, so we'll compare, you know, this year to the previous year. Um, we had a slight drop in taxable value countywide. Um, that's due to, uh, large decrease in value for the two original Amazon sites. So that would be what I call Lewis and Clark one, and have it support like a kind of a cross from, uh, where Windwave is and Les Schwab, and then Ripley Road Site that's right next to Kill 'Em With Cheese. Um, those are all taxable and, you know, done with their exemptions. Um, but they took a pretty good hit at depreciation, unexpected. I didn't expect that much, um, so I was a little, uh, off on my budget estimates for districts. Um, but since then, I've talked with, uh, both Amazon and the Department of Revenue, Oregon Department of Revenue, values, large industrial utility properties, uh, for the county. Um, we were having some meetings in early January, so they can kind of let me know what, uh, what can I expect, you know? Those two Amazon sites, uh, are about 40% of the county's total taxable value. So pretty significant, kind of like back when the coal fire plant was half of the county's value. So, um, so we have a little decrease from the prior year. Um, uh, it increased the market value, but a decrease in taxable value. And then, uh, of course, a decrease in certified tax because the taxable value is lower. So, um, I'm just talking about property taxes generally for, you know, properties in different areas of the county. So inside the Gordenman city limits, uh, the tax rate for properties was a little lower this year, um, due to, uh, the city levying a little less for their, uh, general obligation bond that they did in the prior year. Um, and the city also created a third urban renewal area, uh, called North Gorden, Urban Renewal Area. I'm sure you're familiar with it, you know, encompasses the, uh, the tide water subdivision down by the port. Um, so tax rates for properties inside the city limits went down a little bit. That doesn't necessarily mean your taxes went down, uh, but they should, may have. Um, the outer Gorden area outside the city limits were a few cents higher than the previous year because, um, Gorden Fire District levied a little more on their bond. Um, outer area again was a few cents lower, uh, down in Heffner. Uh, tax rate decreased a little, but the city Heffner still has a very high tax rate. Um, their, their own rate is $10, uh, so their combined rate, you know, what properties would pay is like $24 per thousand, uh, compared to like $120, which is, you know, the Gorden properties that Gorden pay. Go ahead. Properties, uh, down around Ione, um, their, uh, tax rates increased due to their bond. Um, unfortunately, like in that area, they don't have a lot of value. Most of their value is resource farm ground. Uh, the only industrial value they have is the, um, gas pipeline that runs through, uh, their district and, um, some, a little bit of wind, uh, wind project. Here again, city limits with a few cents lower, and rural South County was a few cents lower. So let's talk about those big exemptions. Um, SIP, that stands for Strategic Investment Program. Uh, that's, uh, it's a property tax exemption program. Um, it's not really even close to an enterprise zone exemption, um, except for maybe they, they can be up to 15 years. That's be the only similarity. Um, we have, and I'll go through them here in a minute, um, I think four SIPs. Um, so sorry to stumble here, lost my train of thought. Um, so they get their exemption, but we've also negotiated in lieu of tax payment, kind of similar to what, uh, enterprise zone exemptions do. So they've, uh, paid to the county, uh, 4.5 million dollars. Another component of a SIP exemption is what they call a community service fee, and that's a designated amount, um, that gets paid to the districts that serve that property, excluding schools. So fire district, cemetery district, library district, um, radio and data district, whatever, uh, gets a cut of that money. Um, total exempt taxes was 16 million, and the total exempt value was 1.1, almost 1.2 billion dollars. And I'll go through, oh, I didn't, I must have took that out. I apologize. I will go over them real quick. So the SIPs we have, um, PGE has the Cardi Co-Generation Plant. I don't mean to point at you, Heather, or you, Brenda.
Sorry. I understand.
Okay, um, and the Cardi Generation Plant is a SIP. Um, there's a wind project, a couple of wind projects. Um, we've taken the Shepherd's Flat, which is west of Ione, uh, right where the, uh, 74 hits the freeway. You've probably driven by and seen those wind towers. Wheat Bridge is another one, so you travel south to Heffner. Um, you get to, uh, junctioning of bombing range and 207, there are a North Lex Elevator. And so we went Wheat Bridge Project, and then the solar panels are part of that project as well. Um, there's also, uh, smaller, uh, along, along the bombing range on the east side. Um, Orchard Wind Project, it's very small, 16 towers, 48 megawatts, I think, uh, that's our fourth SIP. Oh, and we'll have a fifth one coming on next year. The Amazon site that's just right out of town here on the bombing range road has an SIP agreement, and it will start, um, it starts this year. So, but the, the Amazon agreement isn't included in these numbers because it wasn't operational. So now we'll move on to enterprise zone exemptions. Um, Land Weston, the, uh, East Plant, um, has a long-term rural enterprise zone exemption, uh, starting back in 2014. Uh, they paid 1.2 million to the CRES Board, 300,000 and change, uh, was the bond payments that Marta spoke of earlier, um, went to the city, uh, Blue Mountain Community College, uh, Gorden Fire, and the Gorden Park District. Um, their exempt tax amount was 1.8 million, their exempt value was 142 million. So just kind of a, a illustration here, that was about a $210 million investment back in 2014. And so 11 years later, 10 years later, I work, can't do math here, given I'm an accounting assessor. Um, you know, we're down to 142 million, so if I do some really quick bad math, uh, you know, that's about 30% uh, the value that's lost during that time. That's a 15-year exemption, four years remaining. It has a predetermined payment schedule, $950,000, and then on top of that is the bond payments. And then, uh, work into those, this, uh, um, enterprise zone agreement is they can deduct $100,000 off of their $950,000 if they do some local donations to, uh, some group or, uh, function or something that benefits Morrow County. It's not just Land Weston, is it? There's more? There's more, yeah, yeah, yeah. I figured that's what you were getting at, but there were more. I'm, I'm picking on the enterprise zone. I'm getting it more detailed because they're more effective or affecting the city of Gorden than more than maybe Wheat Bridge Wind is or, uh, you know, Cape and Shepherd's Flat Wind Project. So, um, Amazon, I, you know, they had five sites currently operational. I talked about the first two that are now taxable, um, the other three, uh, Lewis and Clark II, which is out of the junction of Lewis and Clark and Highway 730, Wolfen Road, you're probably familiar with it, and then Darce Swanson out at the port. These are all 15-year long-term rural enterprise zone exemptions. Go ahead. Um, all three of these agreements have a scheduled schedule of, uh, $1 million for building or data center, um, located at that site with the minimum payment of $2 million per year. So if they only build one building ever, they would always pay $2 million. But if they build two buildings, they still pay $2 million, kind of an odd, but what they, what they wanted. Um, there's also an additional payment calculation where I take $25 million, times the tax rate for that year, and come up with an amount. Um, and that is, that 25 million gets indexed up 3% a year during the life of the. The Olson Road Site also has a 5, excuse me, $50,000 public safety impact fee and a $50,000 student success fee, and they get indexed up annually 3% as well. Um, there is also language in the Olson Road Agreement, um, where Amazon, uh, has the choice to contribute to, uh, any future bonds.
So on this public safety impact and the student success fee, where does that need to go directly?
It gets all paid to the CRES Board. The CRES, the CRES Board divvied it out. So, um, Marta's the fiscal agent with the CRES, so that would be a good question for her.
Okay. I did send out an email. We thought the payment was the letter attached. And after the letter, there's the breakdown, breakout of all of the payments that CRES, um, dispersed out. So if you need another copy of that, just email me and I'll send it out again.
So these are totals, uh, for each of those three sites, uh, the Lewis and Clark Site, um, 5.1 million dollars, then an additional amount of 387,000. Olson Road Site, uh, $4 million, and an additional amount of 535,000. And why the Olson Road Site is quite a bit more is because it's located inside the city limits, higher tax rate, going from like $14,000 to 19 or 20. And then the Garth Swanson Site, uh, they paid $4 million, plus the additional calculation, plus the, uh, public safety impact fee and the student's success fee. Plus the additional calculation, plus the, uh, public safety impact fee and the student's success fee. So the big numbers, um, the total exempt amount from all Amazon properties, eighty-three million dollars. That's quite a bit more than what we levied for taxes, fifty-seven million. Uh, their exempt value is five point eight million. So if you go back to the first slide where I had the countywide taxable value and the R and V value, it's not exact because there's some other condition going there, but that's why there's that difference. Is because of, not all Amazon, there's the other exemptions too, but. Pretty good chunk of it is attributable to Amazon. But Amazon did pay fourteen million dollars in payments to the credits board for those three sites.
So can you tell me super quick, since we're doing that, if the total taxable value was fifty-seven million, so did I get that right? And they?
Total taxes that I levy was fifty-seven million.
Okay, how much of that fifty-seven million is paid by Amazon?
Uh, that's coming up in a slide here shortly. So, um, so now we're just gonna go total Amazon, or excuse me, not Amazon, total enterprise zone exemptions. Um, this includes Land Weston. Also, I, I skipped over a couple of small ones, uh, Moro Canyon Grain Growers. Um, has their rail grain unloading site out here at the old Cardigill thing that's specific ethanol. And then, um, Thuramal Canyon Farms has a methane capturing facility that then to capture the methane, clean it and inject it into gas pipeline that then goes over to the Cardi Generation Plant to be a electricity. So total payments to the credits board this year were fifteen point seven million. Uh, bond payments, three hundred and thirty-three thousand. Uh, total exempt tax amount, eighty-six million and total exempt value just shy of six billion. It wasn't that long ago that we weren't talking, uh, billions. I have interesting, a couple of interesting slides coming up, so go ahead. Ah, how much of that fifty-seven million gets paid by Amazon? Well, nineteen million, five hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
Still the third.
Yep, a little more than the third. And that's just from two sites.
How many more sites do in the?
I would say in the near future. So, the, uh, bombing range road sites coming on this year. There is a boost, uh, one thing I forgot about when I was talking about S I Ps is there's a component of their value that's taxable. So we're gonna get a hundred million dollars of new value out of that S I P agreement to the county. So that's going to help a lot. And then the balance of, uh, their investments will be exempt for the next years.
Sorry, I ran, um, so when you say the county, you're saying Moro County, does that include schools?
Yes, yes.
So you say everything, every taxable district is what you were saying?
Well, every, every district that that property serves. So there are a number of county-wide districts, the county of course, the port, health district, radio and data district, um, yeah. The Oregon Trail Library District is not countywide, but it's pretty good sized, um, and.
And includes that space?
Pardon?
And it includes that space?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, so that's, that's gonna be a nice shot in the arm, you know, a hundred million's nothing to sneeze at. We used to sneeze at it because we didn't think it was ever going to come. So, yeah, you see, Amazon pays the definitely lion's share of the taxes. Um, you know, this is the top twenty taxpayers and you can add up the next nineteen and I don't, they don't even come close to the nineteen million that Amazon contributes.
Avista Corporation.
Coyote Springs.
Okay, thank you. I just wanna, I just wanted to, no, I didn't.
Right, and if anybody would like, I could send this out. People would like to do it. So this is kind of an interesting thing. I used to do, go back twenty years, but it got too big. So I'll just go back ten years of, uh, value, uh, market value, taxable value and certified tax. And this is countywide. So in two thousand fifteen, we had a three point six billion dollar R and V and a two billion dollar A V. And I levied thirty-two million dollars in taxes.
Okay, what's an R and B and an A V?
Pardon?
What's an R and B and an A V?
Okay, real market value is, is real market value. Your house is worth, what, what Amazon has invested, what Land Weston has invested, what just the market value. Before any exemptions.
Okay.
And the tax, the A V assessed value, Oregon's got a really complicated tax system and they love throwing, you know, abbreviations out. So A V means assessed value or taxable value. So, you know, you have, you know, Amazon's got a two billion dollar investment. Let's, let's talk out here at the bombing range site, a hundred million dollars of it is taxable. Nineteen or one point nine billion is gonna be exempt. So their market value is gonna be two billion, their taxable value is gonna be one hundred billion. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So we go from three point six billion in R and V, uh, you know, ten years down the road, we're over eleven billion dollars. Pretty good, you know, two hundred percent increase. Uh, assessed value, uh, going in the right direction, but, uh, you know, almost doubling. But, uh, not quite, um, same with the certified tax. So we're definitely going in the right direction. These are just some cheesy graphs I put together to illustrate what I just said, you know, so, you know, it looks pretty, yeah, we're, we're, we're increasing.
We're off the chart nearly.
Yeah.
So twenty twenty-two, or I think that I got the year right, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, they were almost identical on A V. Which one was it? There was one that was three point nine and the other one was three point nine right after.
I don't know, we can go back.
Please, I just wanna understand. So you see, uh, two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, A V was three point nine and then three point nine.
Oh, yeah.
So what, so that's very, almost identical, but I'm looking, R and B is two, two, uh, million dollars more, right? So, so.
There's actually a.
Why is that?
So, you know, uh,
Is that what you?
Amazon made the investment that's exempt and then their, their, their properties, uh, their original two sites, um, took a big depreciation.
That's what that, so we.
You know, if we take away Amazon out of that, we had about a two hundred and eighty or ninety million dollars worth of new value outside of Amazon. You know, new houses out here in Tuscany and, and new stuff going, you know, new apartments out in Courtview and new houses and stuff going on up there again. Development going on in South County, but there's some, um, and then, um, so we had like a two hundred and ninety million dollars worth of new value, you know? But then those two Amazon sites depreciated three hundred and fifty million.
And kind of ate all of that.
Ate it all up and then some.
Okay.
So that's why we went down.
Got you.
Hope, uh, you know, Amazon, those two sites are gonna take another depreciation hit this year. But I'm hoping, you know, with the, the bombing range road and the Amazon site coming on, we'll hopefully be that. Maybe we'll go back up in the right direction.
You'll probably anticipate it more so than, because that's what you were saying. You, you anticipated it was gonna go up and it didn't.
Well, I, I.
What you thought anyway.
Well, I, I knew it was gonna depreciate and I've been modeling the value over the last ten years. And they, it, it just depreciated more than what my model, uh, information, you know, I had. Uh, the biggest problem is, um, you know, those sites are ten years old now and they were built for technology in two thousand fourteen. Well, their technology has increased and they can store, you know, twice as much data in half the space. And so they only have enough power for X amount of data and so half of the building is empty.
And so that's hard to exclude that.
Right, right, so there's just not, you know, and the cost is the same, you know, what costs for, and, and I'm no expert in this, but you know, uh, gigabyte of storage, um.
A terabyte cost.
Yeah, whatever, and, and so you can put it in the same space for this, twice as much for the same cost. So that's why, you know, even half the building's empty and they only have so much, uh, power coming in to power that.
Got you. Good, thank you.
Well, and excuse me, but I think that too, you need to know that he doesn't value those.
No, I, I get that, I, I was just.
I just, I wasn't, I wanted everybody else in the room to understand that.
You gotta go by what Oregon, state of Oregon tells you.
And then Department of Revenue does that.
If I'm going over my time, I guess, oh well. It went quicker when I practiced this the other day.
Didn't have as many questions.
And, uh, and I have, I explained kind of some of that here in the last few slides on how all this works. So, um, you know, the increase in the market value is mostly from new industrial utility value, you know, new, um, Amazons, new this, new that, everything has been happening the last ten years. A lot of things, it's been exciting. Nobody in Oregon has seen the growth, amount of growth we have. Not necessarily in dollars, but percentage-wise that we have. No other county in Oregon, we're pretty fortunate. You know, and the reason the taxable or assessed value, uh, isn't keeping up with the market value is due to those exemptions. Well, you know, those exemptions, we compete with every other county in the state plus other states that offer property tax incentives. So, you know, we're just in a level playing field. Fortunately, we have, you know, our port, um, they have the infrastructure, the land, um, to accommodate these large industrial facilities, um, you know, and, and we have a lot of vacant land, which is nice. And so we, we've been really fortunate. Oh, we got three-way river and rail right through the middle of it as well. So, I mean, it's perfect, all the, um, you know, exemptions have been lasting, we're from three to fifteen years. Just depends on what they apply for and what, uh, either the county or the credits board agrees to. You know, we have food processing plants, we have the ethanol plant, we have data centers. We have, um, um, rock gravel facilities, uh, hay, hay and commodity facilities, grain, so we're pretty diverse, uh, which is nice. And that helps, you know, sustain the economy and when one industry may be lacking, maybe another one will pick up. So, um, we have like four major wind production projects, uh, large-scale gas-fired, uh, power plant. Solar's becoming a big thing, you're gonna be seeing, if you're traveling south, uh, much more solar panels popping up in the next, uh, you know, two to five years. So, uh, still got some things coming, so that's good. Residential, commercial, uh, you know, development has kind of slowed down a little bit, although, you know, we're still building houses. Um, we're still, uh, doing subdivisions. Earl knows all about subdivisions.
And all that other stuff.
And all that other stuff, yep. And so, yeah, it's, it's exciting. I'm never a dull moment, uh, not, not in my world. So, go ahead, I'll quit rambling. What can we expect? Uh, kind of just went through that a little bit. Should, should still see values increase, uh, maybe not to the extent, uh, we've seen the last five years. Amazon's currently expanding, I need to get back to your question, um, from a few minutes ago. So this bombing range, range road site's coming this year. And I believe another site out on, um, Doris Lawson is gonna come on this year with an enterprise zone agreement. We're starting construction on one out at the airport and I think there's three more in their plans between now and, uh, I think two thousand twenty-nine. So. Uh, and, uh, there, or, I have, I counted them, I have fourteen preliminary partition classes of division sitting on my desk. That, just waiting for. Yep, yep. Now we'll get down to probably what you're really interested in is, uh, here in the city of Boardman. So, this is, I, 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 I took what, uh, you know, your levy, your, your values and your certified tax from the last ten years. So two thousand fifteen, you had a market value of four hundred eighty-five million. Uh, assessed value or taxable value of four hundred and fifty million. And, uh, you collected a one point seven million in, in tax revenue. Fast forward to this year, yeah, two point four, almost two point five billion dollar market value. And you can attribute probably most of that two billion dollars to the Amazon site here on Wilson Road. Uh, but your assessed value has definitely increased as well. Not quite doubled, but getting close, um, in your certified tax, you know, collecting another million dollars. Uh, I threw in the compression loss. Marta and Brandon are probably familiar with this and maybe Karen, because she's, um, been involved with this for a few years, uh, you know, there's some property tax limitations, you've probably heard of measure five, measure fifty. So, uh, I won't get too into detail of that, but you know, your compression loss, uh, uh, not significant, it is a chunk of money, but it's, you know, not a make or break thing. The city of Hepner, uh, loses that much money and they only have a sixty million dollar taxable value. But their tax rate is so high that it impacts those property tax limitations, yeah.
Speaking of compression, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Um, so, I remember back in like two thousand seven or two thousand eight when the school district went out for a levy or a.
Local option.
A local option levy and Mark Burles was superintendent. And he was rather surprised after the levy passed. And there was a five hundred thousand or seven hundred fifty thousand dollar compression difference from anticipated dollars and the result for the ending fund dollars. And it was the difference in ten more jobs or something, was a significant difference. In what he was expecting. And, um, I, and I understand that there's compression, maybe there's compression everywhere, I realize we had so much of it here, but, how does that affect all of the taxing districts?
All districts suffer from compression.
Okay.
Um, there's kind of two ways compression happens. Um, and I'll try to be as quick and as I can and clear. So, measure five was a valid measure back in the early nineties that put limits on what a property can pay to schools and local government. So it can only pay five dollars for a thousand dollars of value to schools and ten dollars for a thousand dollars of value to local governments. So, basically it capped the tax rate at fifteen dollars total. And that's against your real market value. Measure fifty, ballot measure fifty came along in nineteen ninety-six or seven. And it changed a couple of things. Prior to that ballot measure, we were on what we called a levy-based system. Where each taxing district had a levy amount, like their budget amount. And they could increase that up to six percent every year without a vote. And if they went over the six percent, they wanted to increase more, then would have to go out to a vote of the people in that district. Uh, some of you remember voting on road levy, county levies, school levies, probably.
Yeah.
Yep. So, measure, measure fifty changed from a levy-based system to a rate-based system where each district has a frozen rate. The thing that measure fifty didn't do was it did not take away measure five. So, we have to do a test where we take the, and measure fifty also created the assessed value or the taxable value. So measure fifty says you take whatever the tax rate is, all the frozen levies. So, measure fifty says, you take whatever the tax rate is, all the frozen levies that every district has. Times the taxable value and you come up with a tax. Measure five says, you take the real market value of the property, times five dollars to schools and ten dollars to local government. And you come up with a tax. And the lower of those two is what the property owner pays. So that difference is compression. So schools were compressed, they have a five dollar limit, right? The Memorial County School District, and I should know this, uh, it's like four dollars and sixty-two cents per thousand. Um, then you throw in, uh, Intermountain E S D, it's sixty or seventy cents. And then you throw in Blue Mountain Community College, and then all of a sudden, uh, your, that rate's like almost six dollars. So it's already a compression because it's over the measure five limit. Um, then you throw in the, that, uh, local option levy, uh, and I forget how much it was. It, and so, it gets compressed too.
Okay, so.
Does, does, does that kind of?
It, it helps a lot, I did not understand all that, but I. But I did understand that the city of Heffner has a tax for their local government. At ten point six seven, blah, blah, blah. And if that's the case, then all government in Heffner is at ten percent. So what about the rest of the districts?
They all.
From Heffner. All of the districts.
All of the districts, yep.
Go without from the people who own property in Heffner. So that.
All of the districts that serve those properties, not all districts throughout the county. But all, you know, the Heffner Roll Fire, the Heffner Cemetery, the Health District, which is kind of my district, uh. Uh, Radio Data District, Oregon Trail Library. I get them all, Heffner Water Control Baby.
And the county.
Yeah, and the county, of course, county. But the city takes the front of. Of the compression because it's their rate that's compressed.
The city of Heffner.
Yes, the city of Heffner. City of Oregon loses about fifteen hundred bucks a year to compression as well. Does that really low rate? City of Lexington, maybe fifteen, twenty cents.
So when you're compressed at that, that higher rate, are you? From what I'm, I'm thinking she's asking is, so does that mean that they're excluded from paying? Bonds and.
No, bonds are outside, bonds are outside.
So what would they be exempt from then if they're?
Well, um, you know, if.
So the twenty-five cents per thousand that the library district gets as a fixed frozen rate, doesn't get paid by the citizens of Heffner?
Uh, would there's a sum.
Okay, so that's help, thank you.
Right, but no, it doesn't negate everybody else's taxes. All districts share though in that compression, I mean.
They make up the difference.
Yeah, so it goes by. The city takes the brunt of it. I mean, they're the ones that are going to lose the most. And then in order of, you know, levies. Frozen levy amounts is how, you know, how it gets calculated, divvy up down the line. So. You know, the district with the biggest tax rate is gonna get with the biggest hit of compression laws. Does that make sense?
But they're gonna make up their losses somewhere else?
No, not, not through poverty taxes. I mean.
Well, but they, but they get ten dollars per thousand, so, oh.
It, it actually reduces the, it reduces the, it doesn't necessarily reduce the rate, it just reduce. If you take away the measure five thing, instead of Heffner getting four hundred thousand dollars, they might get nine hundred thousand.
But then that's it.
Yeah, but since there's the measure five limits involved, they're not collecting what they. Totally could collect, they're only collecting a portion of that.
But all the other districts also take a hit.
Yes.
Health District and Cemetery District, and the Water District or the Radio District or whatever.
Yep.
Okay.
Same here, same in Boardman, you know, and, uh, you know. If a property has compression, um, and compression is calculated by district. Um, it's going to affect, um, all the districts that serve that property. So, bonds are excluded, um, local options are not, and of course frozen levies are not. It would be scary if bonds were because then, you know. The city needed to collect, you know, a million dollars for their bonds, but if they were involved with the compression, they may not only collect, you know, six hundred thousand, then. Wow, I, where am I gonna get that other four hundred thousand to make my bond payment? So that's why bonds are specifically excluded. They weren't for the first year or two and then, uh.
There was some discovery.
There was some legislation that happened, yeah.
So where do our compressions come from? What, what causes our?
So a lot of it is, um, when the assessed value and the market valuable property are really close. That causes compression too. So, um, you know, some of the industrial properties that are located within the city limits. They have that scenario, um, some of your lower end homes. Um, a lot of, uh, personal property, manufactured homes, uh, not that they contribute a lot to tax base, but. You know, that's where it's going to come from, I mean, um, and. You're, you're still a little over the measure five limits anyway, um. You know, I think the tax ratio around nineteen dollars. So you're still a little compressed, you know, fifteen dollars is the limit. Um, part of that's due to the school, but most, uh, part of it's due to local governance as well.
Did, just so I'm clear, you said older homes and so would I, would you also say, um, empty land? Is that, is that what you're kind of saying?
Uh, didn't mean, uh, not necessarily. You know, maybe more, um. Homes that haven't had a lot of improvement.
Gotcha.
Less well preserved.
And what about empty land?
Uh, empty land, probably not because land values have been increasing.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Even if that's light.
Yeah.
Uh, now, uh, could talk a little bit about urban renewal area. So, the central urban renewal area, which kind of encompasses over there, I believe, right?
Good job.
Yeah, um, you know, when it was, well, it was created back in, I think, two thousand seven or something. Okay, I just took a ten-year snapshot, um. You know, whenever a rural area gets created, uh, I have to take the value for all of the properties located in that area. Um, the value from last certified assessment roll and create a frozen value. And so, it's a point in time where all the properties in that geographical area of that urban renewal. Um, what their value was. And so, that's a baseline. And then any new value that comes in subsequent years, um. Goes directly to the Urban Renewal Agency. So, um. Uh, two thousand fifteen had a frozen value of, well. Frozen value should never change unless you add or, uh, remove properties from the area. Um, you know, three point one million, um, had an excess value of two point six. So, uh, the Urban Renewal Agency got, you know, forty-three thousand. Uh, and we'll jump up to two thousand twenty-two and. What brought that big spike? Well, the Boardman sleep in, because we call them motel over here. They had a three-year enterprise on exemption, um, and in year two of their exemption, they forgot to file the appropriate paperwork. Even though they were reminded, so they lost one year of their exemption, um. They immediately filed the next year's, uh, paperwork and got their third year of exemption. And then that was in twenty-three and then two thousand twenty-four it came back as taxable or exemption expired. Um, the west Boardman Urban Renewal Area, which is over here.
Good job.
Can you go, better quit now? It, it started in two thousand fifteen, so it really is ten years old, um. And had a frozen value of seven point nine million and it's steadily increased over time, um. Uh, you know, from one point eight excess, um, up to eight point two. So. I'm sure that money is going towards some new infrastructure things around. Uh, go ahead. And then our new one, the North Boardman, um, frozen value. Twelve point six million, uh, new value five point seven, so it's starting out pretty good. And it's only gonna continue to grow as those, as that subdivision gets filled up and they build more apartment building. Ah, and Boardman's top taxpayers, probably isn't surprising.
Nah, not for me, but go ahead.
You know, Land Weston, they have two or three plants inside the city limits, um. You know, Vista, again, that's the Coby Springs.
Is this on your website?
It is not.
Okay.
But I'll be happy, I'll mail it out to Brandon or email it to Brandon and Brandon can distribute it.
Thank you.
I know this has been posted in the newspapers too, the local ones.
Well, I don't think for just Boardman, I think he shows.
Yeah, for the county.
The one that you can go on the county's website and look at.
Right, right. What makes all this happen? The county assessor, he's charged with identifying, cataloging, valuing all taxable or real property. Located in the county as the January first assessment date every year. Um, so how do we do that? Well, that's challenging, because, uh, there's, uh, in my department, I have eight people, including myself. And that's just not enough to go around and visit all of our, you know, eight or nine thousand, ten thousand accounts every year. Uh, so we kind of do a, what we call mass appraisal, um. Uh, we value all property in the county except for large industrial and utility properties, which the Oregon Department of Revenue values. On an annual basis as well, and they give us the value, um, and then I enter it into our, onto the assessment roll to calculate the tax from. The, uh, county assessor delivers the assessment role to the county tax collector. I happen to be both, not, and not all Oregon counties are that way. Some, um, the, the, uh, assessors, just the assessor and tax collectors in a different department. Um, it used to be that way in Morrow County until about nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand. The tax collector was in the treasurer's office and the assessor just had assessor duties. But now, I, I think they're a good fit because, uh, you know, taxes are derived from assessments of property, so. You know, uh, everybody, anybody that has a question or a concern regarding the value of their tax bill, they can just come to. Chew on me for a while. So, uh. Uh, so the county assessor delivers the assessment role to the county tax collector. Who, uh, to impose taxes against those properties, the tax collector sends out the property tax statement and then collects. Uh, the property tax payments, uh, the county treasurer still is very involved. Um, after the tax collector collects those payments. Turns the money over for deposit and distribution to the treasurer. Who then deposits the money in the bank and then distributes it to, distributes to all the taxing districts. Um, you know, Morrow County, the assessor is also the tax collector. I'm, uh, assessor by, I'm an elected assessor, uh, the county commission appointed, appointed, appointed me tax collector. Um, I have a staff, I have two front office assessment and tax clerks. Um, I have four appraisal staff and then a data analyst who. Part-time appraiser too. She pretty much handles all of the Department of Revenue values and such, um. I, I'm a working assessor, what I mean by that is I pretty much handle all the exemptions except for disabled veterans. Um, my front office staff handles those, but I handle all large, um, enterprise owned. Um, S I P and then, um, any charitable. Uh, you know, like a church or, uh, Boardman Food Pantry or somebody that has to apply, uh, for an exemption. Um, or make application for an exemption, I handle all of those. Um, I'm pretty familiar with a lot of the properties in the county, I said I've lived here my whole life. Um, I'm, I'm familiar with Boardman, because there's a lot going, we spent a lot of time up here pre-COVID. I've probably spent most of my time up here, doing meetings and, um, you know. Dealing with things out at the port and, uh, there's been a lot of development over here. So, I'm really sad to see that, uh, um. The Groom Hub went out, because that was one of my favorite places to come, uh. But, uh, we've come over and golf, uh, the, the golf course, Port took over that golf course and it's just wonderful now. Anyway, nothing about drinking beer and playing golf, uh. I have my appraisal staff, um, the county treasurer is like a physician, she's a one-man show. And, um, and she does a lot for, uh, districts, um, she'll invest money for some districts. Uh, she'll hold money for them and, and then, and distribute to them as needed, um, so. Any questions? That was a lot of information, I ran over by about twenty minutes.
I, I appreciate you coming here, because I, I felt like I learned a lot. Like there's just a lot of information that you're not gonna know about, but something that explains it to you.
Right, and please feel free, any follow-up questions, um, I have, I have some cards, I'll pass them out. I'm, give me a call, um, I'm happy to come meet again, any follow-up question, um. I, I come to a lot of district budget meetings, uh, last several years, I've been invited to, uh, quite a few and I enjoy doing it. I consider part of my job and public service, um, you know, to come and educate people, so.
Just a couple of questions, um, the, um, education requirement for the, for your staff, the appraisers? Can you briefly say what, what's the requirement?
In, in Oregon, um, to be a. Certified appraiser for ad valorem, which means property tax purposes, um. You have to pass an exam, um, with the state Department of Revenue. And the continuing education is, I think it's thirty hours every two years. Um, two of my appraisal staff just, uh, actually, they were trainees and they just passed their appraisal exam, I believe on the twentieth. Um, so that's exciting.
And all of your staff live in Morrow County or do any live?
No, they all live in Morrow County, um. See, one lives in Hyone. I live just outside of Heffner, standing, I live just outside of Heffner. A couple live inside the city limits and a couple live out of town. If we're all.
Still Morrow County?
Yep, we're still, we're all in Morrow County. So I got a comment, um, if you're not an enterprise zone fan or a SIP fan. You probably should kind of be thinking that that's pretty cool amount of money that we get by having those entities in our. Community, in our county, uh, think of where we would be if. We listen to a bunch of yahoos that don't like this, where we'd be sitting, uh, cities and communities and a county. It's, when I go, when you go to mayor conferences and you talk to these other cities who don't have this. Who don't have the money that these businesses bring in, we are really, really lucky. To have these businesses that bring this amount of money into our county and to our area. And, you know, the yahoos in Portland who don't want these Amazons and all that other stuff, uh, they're missing out. You know, and you have, I mean, we got Boardman, we got Irrigan, we got Heffner, we got Lexington and Hyone. What, that's what, twelve thousand people maybe? And then you count the people who live in county. And you go to these other communities down south that. On I five, who are having a hard time to make their budget, who don't have this infrastructure coming in to support. Uh, it, I mean, it's a no-brainer to me, I, I just, it's just, we have to keep. Businesses coming in here to keep our county growing. Are there some negative things? Yeah. But if you're a person on the court that is not in favor of growing these things, they need to find a new place.
But if you're a person on the port that is not in favor of growing these things, they need to find a new place. They need to find a new job. Because you can keep. And we need to keep our county prosperous. And the only way we're gonna do that is by encouraging these businesses to invest with us.
So far, for sure.
Yeah.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
I hope I didn't wear out my welcome and I'm getting invited back.
No, good job, thank you. All right, our next pre-arranged presentation is the Maro County Public Transit.
Hello? That was, that, that's a tremendous act of Paul. I thought the kids would be hard if I was saying that. Thanks, you're very small. When people talk about billions and I'm gonna talk significantly different number. My name's Stephen Davis. I've been a part of Maro County as the transportation manager for about two and a half months. Um, just a quick background, when I was offered the position, I got, received a call between offered and starting, saying, hey, we need to let you know, uh we're losing approximately six hundred thousand dollars in transportation funds. Are you still interested? And so, obviously I was because I'm here. Um but what that did is put me on the ground kind of running and I needed to identify, how can we serve the community from a public transit standpoint? Losing funds. And so what we did, uh you can go ahead, jump to the next slide there, sorry. So what we kind of did, in this next slide, I'm presenting more as uh information for you, so we'll go to the, the following one. What we tried to do is identify, um from the information that was shared both from the BOC uh committees, is uh what, what, what do we need? Like what is the, the community missing? Identified is there's uh two essential pumps we want to do. We wanted to create a circular routing Boardman or uh have the residents to maintain and provide uh a connection to the resources here. And then we wanted to find a way to connect South County to the North County and our neighboring counties to places like Good Shepherd, uh when they needed resources that were not in their communities. So if you want to go to the next slide, we created three new fixed routes, which actually started Monday. Um from a public stand, from a public transit standpoint, fixed routes, if you think of a larger city, the big buses that are going on regular routes on a schedule. And then the demand response of the vans that pick up people from their homes to take them directly to location. So all of our changes have primarily been from a fixed route system. We created three routes, the Amarillo, the Rojo and the Murado. Obviously color coordinated, uh Amarillo's the Boardman route. Um in addition to uh providing, when we're building the Amarillo route, what we want to do is where people want to go. So right, some of the stops are at the library, uh the junior uh senior high school, community counseling center, the, the health department, the health district, Murray's Harvest Food. We wanted to get to the essential services. So people who are low income, no income, single vehicle, have an opportunity to get to some of the places uh that are, that are essential to everyday life. In other few routes, the Rojo and the Murado are more county-based, we call them the county connectors. They are intended to bring people to Hermiston, Irrigan, Boardman from the south and vice versa. So those two routes are actually identical, other than direction. Rojo would go, you started in Boardman, go clockwise to Irrigan, Hermiston, Hepner back to Boardman. Murado would go the other way. And by having this counter clockwise clockwise routing system, it allows someone to take a route one direction, do their service while the other one's coming to pick them up, to bring them back home, so there aren't extended wait times or abandonment once they're out of the community. Um, I want to go to the next slide there. I'm gonna primarily focus obviously on the Amarillo route here in Boardman. Like I said, we, we just started Monday. There is, it does a loop, that's there on the map, it does it fifteen times a day. First route starts at six fifteen AM and it ends at approximately five thirty PM. The list on the side is identifying all the stop locations, obviously associated with the map. And when we were designing this, what we wanted to do um is we wanted to be able to connect the people on the north side of the interstate to kind of the central district where the food, the bank, resources are at. So it, it leaves the north end, does its loop, comes to the central district here, then continues to the south like Kunsie and Wilson, comes back to this district before heading freeway. So we didn't want to do, we didn't have the resources to put someone on the bus and we didn't want them to have to ride like a forty-five minute loop. Because people, that's just not practical, right? If you can walk in in twenty, you're not gonna ride the bus for forty-five. So we had to use this area kind of as our central location. So we kind of figure eight through the community on this route. That's why if you look at the stop list, some of the stop numbers repeat themselves because we're going to that location more than once. It's not an error in putting uh the wrong number there. Um so some of the things, uh twenty-eight stops. Interesting, today's day two, uh we had fourteen riders today on the second day of service. In comparison, um the last quarter for the whole county, for fixed route, not including van service, we had forty total riders. So if we maintain fourteen people a day, we're gonna be hundreds of percent increase. And that's with just a little, a little bit of monthly engagement I've had, I've gone out to multiple uh employers and community partners to promote the change, uh not just here in the north, but in the south county as well. Um Irrigan, I know it's not here, it's never had service. We've already had six riders from Irrigan going to uh Hermiston. So there's a need and it's obvious, so uh one of the great things about this is if we've been working with Carla, pretty much since day one, I've been here. Um and Brandon, to identify and hopefully soon get stops put up. So people are, can visually see where to catch the bus. Additionally, the Board of Commissioners has approved us to use some technology where in about a month, all the buses will be able to be viewed in Google and on an app, so you can identify exactly where it is, so you're not calling for rides or dealing with pieces of, pieces of paper, you know, to figure out when the bus is gonna be there. Um so we're, we're able to start using some of this technology. And what I'm really finding, I'm, I'm, I'm a transener, I've been in the industry for fourteen years. Sometimes I can talk about it and then I realize, and no one paying attention to what I'm saying because it doesn't make sense to them, right? But um, um what I think is amazing is how much the community has seemed to grab on to it since we've really promoted that it's there. Uh a prime example of this, right, and Boardman was mentioned earlier about how they don't want, you know, these factories there. But from a public transit standpoint, thirty years ago, they were putting light rail in Portland. And now it's ingrained in their syst, you know, their entire city is the culture, who they are. And they did that all for like twenty million dollars. King County right now in Seattle has sixty-five billion dollars of grant money to put light rail in. And so it is great that we have this partnership, we see that the, the people in, in uh, you know, the Parks Department and the City of Boardman, because we can get it in now ground level and have it identify that this is a resource for our, our residents. And it becomes ingrained, it's passed generationally, roads travel less, people don't need to spend as much money on second cars. Uh and so it's really exciting, you know, all my career has been in the maintain mode. And I took this opportunity kind of as an opportunity to, to create some, it's been much more rewarding than I ever thought it was gonna be. Just, just some of the stats, just from today, when I talked about the riders, we had one student that used it to get to school. They forgot their lunch and went back home and the bus happened to come by, but now they know it, right? And that's how organic the training happens. Um kudos to our driver for stopping, saying, I can get you to school, right? And I, when I first heard this story, because the driver came in on their little break and told me about it, I thought it was someone who went to the junior senior high. This is a ten-year-old that only went to the elementary school that was able to navigate and get on the bus. And from a safety standpoint, just you're over, all of our buses have campus systems. So it, it, it's a, it's a safe avenue, our drivers are trained, you know, not to let uh certain things happen. Uh four individuals got on and went to the rec center as a group. So we already have seen group ridership. And then we had uh three other individuals from, and I apologize being muted at the area, uh the, the facility right there on the corner of Main Street and Kunsie. There was, there were, residents are able to not use the van serves to call us and have them come pick up. They were able to navigate, get to the bus system and, and come down. And, and really that's beneficial, because if you think about, the van service is a tremendous service where you call, get a ride and come, and we take you somewhere. But for every time we take a van somewhere, that resource can't be used anywhere else in the county. And that's kind of the point of building these county connectors and these routes, right? If we send a van down to Hepner that needs to go to Hermiston, that two-hour, three-hour trip, that means all that money that's being tied up in that individual pad person that needs that ride, can't go to anywhere else in the county. So we wanted to find a way without taking away that service, how do we expand it? And by smi- slightly modifying that van service, because we're prioritizing medical trips now versus just first come, first served, we were able to take those resources for that expensive service to create these three routes, even after losing almost a third of our entire budget. So just quickly going over, if you want to roll to the next slide.
Can I ask you a quick question? So from, I don't, I can't really make up the number, but I'm in the bottom quadrant on the left-hand side. I believe that's Belvesta. How far from there to the rec center? How long does it take to make that?
The entire loop, if you start at number one, right by the red and green dots, is a, is a thirty-three minute loop. So it's about seven, eight minutes on the north side of the county to get to the middle, and about ten or twelve minutes from the south side to get back to the north side, because it's a little bit larger of an area. So if you got on at one and rode back to one, it's thirty-three minutes.
So. Does this point anticipate like issues getting over the bridge at any point?
Yes, so the route's thirty-three minutes, but it's headway, it leaves every forty-five minutes.
Because that, that has happened, just, and it's rare that it has happened, and then the only way is through the port.
And we also do that is because we have what's called a deviated fixed route system. So anybody with a medical disability, because we don't have a designated paratransit service. So if someone say um lives off of Wilson in that kind of gray area that doesn't have a bus route, and they can't physically make it to a bus stop, and they call us, we'll deviate off the route, pick them up and then come back onto the route to continue. And so we have to build a little bit of time in for those deviations. So, and that, that has to be pre-scheduled, because obviously the driver wouldn't know to deviate off the route if someone wasn't there. Um so the other two routes, like I said, are identical, so I didn't do them full. One of them is the North County and one is the South County. But this is essentially the loop through Irrigan, so you can leave Boardman and say you wanted to go to Hermiston. You would ride the, the yellow route, the Amarillo route to or off this connect with this route. This route goes through Irrigan, so it goes to the skate park, the park, uh both the schools. Uh the county office is there, the library, and then continues on through Umatilla. There's just one stop in Umatilla by the high school and Harvest Foods up to Good Shepherd and then Walmart, and then continues down south. And then if you go to the next slide, this is the south portion of the route where it comes in. It's designed to support Hepner, has a circular route for the residents there, but more as that connector. So it comes in, goes past the pool and the community park. Uh it's at the senior center and Willaput Retirement up to the hospital, the apartments up there before heading back out of town. So you could catch the bus, ride in summertime, ride to the pool, spend some time with your family, catch the other bus coming out to take you home. We didn't want to just make a bus that just went into town and ride back out. There needed to be some connectivity within the community and an option. So, those are there. And then lastly, if we slide through, as I'm sure all of you are aware, when these routes were originally stood up, um the main purpose was for commuter traffic to the port. For, for, I'm sure, a litany of reasons, it hasn't been successful. Uh whether that's our operating hours, whether that's the people typically making enough money to have transportation options. But we didn't want to lose that route and that connectivity to our port partners, because it's a tremendous opportunity for growth. So in the transit agent in the world, there's a thing called first and last mile service. Essentially to extend to somewhere that isn't part of your normal system. And so we have a system where anybody who wants to ride the bus into Boardman and then take, from myself or my staff, will take you in one of our vehicles, not our personal vehicles, right, one of our rural county vehicles to whatever port location you work at. So you would ride the fixture up to a centralized location and then we would take you to that first, last and mile of rural place. It doesn't make sense to continually have a loop going through it, because there just isn't enough traffic day after day or hour after hour to make it uh a successful trip.
Sounds like you really know what you're doing.
I'm not gonna say sounds, I think. The great part is I haven't hit, I haven't hit a roadblock, right? It's nice that you're able to explain something well enough for someone to understand. So I'm obviously open for questions. I did want to say we didn't move, we have been in the county offices. And a great friend of mine did notice that I shared we moved, but not the address. We're at one oh one Boardman Avenue, we're at where the old white office used to be on the west side of the health district, right? The department office. Uh and that's where all these routes originate and start from now. We keep them here, but the, the route, the buses, but the routes start and end there.
And that's Kitty Carter from the post office.
Correct.
Now, are you tied in with Diaphra? Is that totally different? Are they just a different?
Sure, they're different, yeah. So one of the first things I did is I reached out to them, made the connection. And part of being able to do that first and last mile is they have a service that goes to the port during their shift hours. So people coming from out of the county can get to the jobs through kayak. Uh additionally, when we made these changes, we reached out to identify. What I don't want to do is I don't want to have two different transit properties doing the same thing. I want to make sure that we're working in unison, because there's, there, there's enough support rurally and connecting these communities that we can both be there. In fact, they've invited me tomorrow, I'm sitting with them to plan their, their next phase of getting to the tri-cities. So we're gonna try to utilize some of our general locations, our central locations, as like the hub to connect with their bus to get people to the tri-cities.
Nice.
So it, it's a, it's a piece that's always intertwined. And we can just go back to the last slide, and I promise this will be the only time I do this. This is an unauthored quote, I can't find who it's from, but in my, my life, i- in the transition, I've grown from a, a low-level leadership up through the ranks. Uh it's kind of my focal point, and I would just like to share it, so when we have conversations or you question why maybe something's happened, this is, if I don't know if it's the right thing to do, this is what I go to, obviously besides the direction of my leadership. It's public transit is the backbone of a connected community, providing access to opportunity, promoting, I can't ever say this word, inclusivity, and enhancing mobility for all. It's not about getting from one place to another. It's about ensuring that every individual has the ability to participate fully in society, right? Regardless of their background or their circumstances. And that's lost often when we try to support our large partner, right? Sometimes our funding comes from, right, as a public a- agency, we should be looking to how we can match that also with the people who uh most need our service. So, uh you know, so as we get to know each other better or continue to work together, that's kind of where my philosophy comes from when trying to. Any questions?
I do, how much does it cost to ride a bus?
Free.
Oh my gosh.
I'm leaving.
Not happy that they keep getting muted.
So at any point, anytime there's anybody interested and has a question, please reach out. We're continuing to engage with our community partners to continue to expand the, and share this information. Uh I have a meeting next week with Irrigan Parks Direct, who want to use this, the, that red route we looked to take students to the Hermiston Aquatic Center. And so they'll be able to, last year they spent twenty thousand dollars in transportation fees, or this year for free, they'll be able to move students from there to, to the pool, have two hours to swim to catch you back and come back. And they could do that five days a week, Monday to Friday.
You know, that's an interesting concept, because there are a lot of kids who like to participate in the Umatilla Electric Cooperative. You know, that's an interesting concept because there are a lot of kids who like to participate in the Umatilla Electric Cooperative's summer science camp. It's two week program in Hermiston and it's um, for fifth and sixth grade kids only. And but parents have to take time off to be able to get them back and forth. And so that's a what is the youngest that a child could ride unsupervised?
So we're identifying that right now um, is thirteen is what the uh, I would say the county has identified, but previous transportation management federally, it's six.
Okay, so the ten year old today, where is?
Fine. And it's, and sixteen is really young, right? And there's a reason behind that. From a ADA standpoint, when you're five and under, your disability is based off of your parent. And then when you become six, it's based off of your own ability to get to and from a bus. So that's where that federal line was drawn at six. Not to say that's the right thing, but it, it uh, it's used regularly in larger cities, six year olds, you won't reason with one of us.
Six year olds on the box.
Ten year olds going to Hermiston, that's even a stretch for me.
I have two of my, two of my kids that are ten, I'd probably let them do that one. No. He's too much like me.
So would you really, like, like you're saying, like if, if we had four or five kids here in Boardman want to take part in the UMC, whatever, they could make arrangements to catch the bus and drive over there and?
There, there's two ways, right? They could, they could try to schedule the van service and take them directly, but that was medical priorities, so.
It's iffy.
And, and so on the fixed route system, it would work if it worked the same times our routes were already operating. You know, so.
See, we've never thought about using any kind of public transportation for any of these kinds of projects. Because you know, like the Boardman Marina Park, our summer program, we pay like thousands of dollars to drive around town here to pick up kids.
And I met with George and his staff, they were, they were fanatic. We, I, we accidentally just walked in there and they're having a team meeting and sit down and explain this to us. And they were the first people to say, put signs up, tell everybody, give us information, we'll give it to the campground we want the bus to come in here and bring people in and out. We don't want people in pitching their trailers and dragging them through town. If they know they can get to Harvest Foods or somewhere else in ten minutes, why go through that effort?
Oh, we've got to really get on the ball selling here.
And once again, right, Boardman is great because we have the circulars happening all the time. It's a little bit more limited with the county because there's so much distance between each, right? Think of one of those, one of those, each of those red and purple rocks I showed you only does that entire loop twice a day.
So I have a couple more questions. Um, so I have some friends who only have one vehicle and it's preserved for the person who's carted around the infants. So, but we looked all over and couldn't find any information online to know when the routes were happening. Well, like two or three weeks ago, we looked. We probably ran your senior center presentation that I.
So, so we updated from website with all of this information, all those colored maps and times are on there now. But I'm happy to share them out. You know, we, we posted them on Facebook. Uh, it seems silly, right? That's our marketing campaign. Our budget is Facebook. We had no followers two and a half months ago. We've got like a hundred and thirty-ish now and most of our followers are getting two, three thousand engagement. So the, the community is very interested. And now it's my job and my staff's job to make sure when we say the bus is going to be there, it continues every day. Uh, and so you might see me driving a bus because I have staff call up. I'm not, not going to run the bus. I'm going to be the one in the bus, you know, driving it because no one will use it if it's not reliable. So. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, our next presentation is Mr. Fuss. The Boardman Rent Report.
Hello, um, my name is Stephen Fuss. I live in Portland, Bus First Street, uh, Boardman, Oregon, nine seven eight. Uh, this is my third year giving this presentation. So some of you have heard of twice, some of you have heard of three times. I lived in the area for about four and a half years. I'm a musician and private lessons teacher since I have left the schools um, last May. Um, and I rented a Portview apartment starting in twenty twenty and then recently moved in uh, with Coach Olby. And the current address uh, in twenty twenty-four and really funny, not an April Fool's joke, but I found out that I will have to find somewhere else to move uh, to come mid-June. So this presentation is very relevant in my current life. So let's jump straight to the results because I know you guys have a time limit on these sorts of meetings. Uh, so there are seventeen properties, ten complexes with seven houses slash private rooms. Um, that is on page three, that chart. The cheapest is eight hundred dollars, which is what uh, Coach Olby was paying at my address uh, before I moved in. We're up to nine hundred now. Followed by Two Folk uh, Anderson in the circle northeast at eight sixty-seven for a one bedroom. Um, Portview and Tidewater sitting well over a thousand with Portview being twelve eighty-one and Tidewater being fourteen eighty-six uh, up from last year. And the most common number of bedrooms for rental unit is three bedrooms. Um, there is one property on that list that's closed permanently according to Google, but it's still listed on some apartment uh, websites as call for availability. Um, and it does not include the four rent posts that happen in uh, community info groups because an outsider, which is sort of the point of view of this uh, report, would not necessarily have access to that information. Even though there are almost daily posts about places um with varying prices. Um, point number two of the results, right? Increases of stall per year have started to rise um, in smaller increments, uh, both at Portview and Tidewater. And I do want to shout out their uh, property manager, um, because she was the one who got the uh, rent down in twenty twenty-four from thirteen twenty down to uh, twelve twenty. Which, and she said that the owners of these two properties who live uh, I believe, if I remember correctly, that company's RDO that owns the property. Portview is just managers of that, or affinity property managers is just manager. Manager said that they are the nicest owners she's ever worked for, so it's good that we have those people in our community, even though their prices are kind of outrageous. Um, the current rental increase cap according to awards chapter ninety is ten percent for twenty twenty-five. And the current majority of available apartment units still have rents that is higher than the fair market rent for more county at a range of ninety-five to seven hundred twenty-seven dollars more. The uh, that, those numbers are on page five and six. So currently the fair market rent for a one bedroom is seven hundred seventy-two dollars for our county. Um, and for a two bedroom, it's nine hundred uh, thirty-three. And then median rent for our county for a one bedroom is eight hundred thirteen dollars and median rent for a two bedroom is nine hundred eighty-three. So the two bedroom median has fallen luckily in the past few years while the other rents have gone up. Uh, median average income, this will come into play later, uh, for Boardman for an individual is twenty-eight thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars. While for households and multiple people, um, is sixty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. If you turn seven, we can see that uh, Portview Apartments takes up fifty-four percent of a person's individual um, income while taking up about a quarter of a household's income uh, for a one bedroom. And there are two bedrooms for an individual, um, it takes up sixty-two percent and twenty-eight percent respectively. Now, according to Portland Traffic Thirty, uh, city code, the one bedroom um, apartments are unaffordable by like twenty percent because their rule is that uh, utilities and base rent have to be thirty percent or less than someone's income. Unfortunately, we cannot calculate uh, utilities into these calculations because by the same definition, Boardman's utilities, at least at Portview and Tidewater, are paid to third party groups, not directly to the company itself. Um, comparing it to minimum wage, uh, it takes up thirty, uh, one bedroom income, or sorry, one bedroom uh, rent takes a fifty-four percent of a minimum uh, wage worker's income and sixty uh, three percent if they stay at Tidewater. Current minimum wage is thirteen dollars and seventy an hour, which comes out to about twenty-eight thousand four hundred ninety-six. Um, and if you look at the graph on page eight, you can see that the annual median average income for an individual and annual minimum wage are about to cross. Because the uh, annual median average income is falling while minimum wage is rising. So those lines are about to like go in tandem with each other. Yes. So uh, just to summarize that, uh, rent at many apartments still takes up about fifty to sixty percent of an individual's income and about twenty-seven percent of households. So it's affordable for a household, meaning more than one person's income within a family. Some good things that the city's doing, you guys appointed people that you're housing a public advisory committee. But unlike the other committees, you have not posted anybody's role or what they're advocating for on their website or on your guys' website. And I believe you guys have set twenty thousand dollars aside for that housing needs analysis. If my memory serves me correctly, I could not find my notes about that. You guys have also agreed to work with the Missing Middle Housing Fund, which this report has been shared with, as well as the former reports, which are also in this one. This report has also been shared to our state and federal representatives and senators so that they can also look at it. In fact, Mr. Wyden, or Senator Wyden responded to me about it and said that he was working on um, a bill to increase the low income housing tax credit and fund the construction of two, two hundred thousand units of affordable housing, including six thousand in Oregon last year. And he has also expressed concern about that. Um, some concerns though with this is that there have been statements made by uh, a couple of council members that give me pause about whether they should vote on who should show up and not who should do a good job. And then um, some have stated that they want to get rid of low income housing and it's been a year and there's been no plan produced uh, on their personal Facebook. And granted, I have not taken the time because I've been going through a whole bunch of life change to sit down with this uh, council person and talk to them about it. Now, uh, results continue. The quality of life at some of these quote unquote luxury apartments, specifically Portview um, has decreased even though their cost has increased. Um, there was a Facebook uh, post in the Boardman Oregon Community Info Group that stated there was man urinating on a white Subaru and that drug deals are happening on this property. Um, I went to go find this to put it in the back of your uh, packet, however, could not find it. Of course, the owner of that uh, group can take away posts as he see fit. In fact, I've uh, defended his honor on that. Um, and then there's one person who um, I've talked to over the phone who's in a pretty high position within the government, or at least within the state government. He's in a good position. That he is hesitant about moving out to our areas specifically because of these housing costs that he sees and renting costs. Today, in Senator Cory Booker's uh, address to the Senate, he stated that twelve percent on average rent increase um, yearly across the country. So we're not seeing, or so we're seeing it not just here in Boardman, but across the country. Um, and that uh, there potentially could be a ten percent more in housing costs uh, according to the housing companies that he talked to because of the tariffs being placed on by our current administration. Um, and then Senator Booker also mentioned that the majority of Americans spend about one third of their income on rent, which is what that affordability statement. Uh, so conclusions and implications, uh, rent is plateauing, which is good, but also starting to creep back up. You guys are listening to the citizens, which is great, uh, by starting this housing uh, advisory committee. And I'm excited because I was looking ahead in the packet that uh, hopefully Carly is going to speak on the housing um, needs analysis that you guys have planned as well. Um, and so, so some good implications is that the city and folks in our city might return to a multi-generational family unit living in one household or in, within a small community, which is great, uh, which means we're building families and all of that stuff. However, depending on how costs go and how income goes along with it, we could see a broken homelessness. In fact, uh, we just had a homeless man come in here today into the city while you guys were in your executive session, asking for blankets and stuff. And it's great that the city manager and um, Chair Lees also took um, some time to meet with him and talk to him if I figured out his needs. So other implications are that folks and families looking to move to town or who have to move to town will either look to other areas um, like Hermiston, like Tri-Cities, to find housing or will have to settle for paying three hundred thousand dollars plus for a home. Yes, there are those incentives that we've mentioned every year that I've come here for housing. However, the cost of mandatory nature of part of our population could prevent a large brokenness. Yes, I urge you more uh, now than ever, both because it's affecting me personally and trying to find a place to continue to grow my uh, private business, but also to continue to fill the need for music in Boardman and music educators in Boardman. Yeah, so hopefully you guys can look, take a look over towards ninety and the other places. Uh, I think I've included Portland's city code as well as Eugene's city code. In your practice as well for you to look over, Boston also in twenty twenty-three just passed some rent control stuff. St. Paul Minnesota did as well. Minneapolis put a rent control stabili- stabilization work group together in twenty twenty-one, so that could also be an option. Uh, in New Jersey, Montclair uh, passed theirs in twenty twenty-two and they have over more than one hundred municipalities that have rent control. Uh, Washington DC has Senator Merkley and Washington Representative Smith introducing the Hope for Homeownership Act, which is uh, their goal is to remove hedge funds out of the housing market, which would be a good thing for everybody. Um, and then Washington State, our northern neighbors, have reintroduced a bill to create rent caps and stabilizations, even though it's currently banned. So overall, rent is stabilizing. However, it could be cheaper and more affordable, especially as our minimum wage increases and our costs outpace that. So continue the good work. Uh, thank you for listening to the people on this. And I hope, uh, and I'll try to reach out to those uh, city council members that I mentioned in here uh, to talk to you guys about housing and stuff, even though I'm not on that uh, housing advisory committee. Cool. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Question. I guess it's more of a statement. Uh, you mentioned in there the almost individualism here. Oh, your deck session, cleaning that up. We were not in the deck session, just before the meeting.
Okay, cool. Yeah.
That way, on the record.
Okay. I appreciate that correction. Thank you. So, um, yeah, I, I'll post this in the info, in any of the info groups so that uh, citizens can have it. Uh, and then you can also see the other reports, the biggest reports. But also you can see all the dates on the cover of when I was updating this. And because rent is sort of set in September, um, I don't usually work on it till the winter months.
So Mr. Fuss, I have a question.
Yeah.
You were talking about rent controls and so if the state is working on rent controls and the city is working on trying to figure out how they can provide more housing and rent in are, are you suggesting that the city government should have put, uh, take control of the rent prices? Is that what you're trying, are you saying?
Not necessarily. Um, in Eugene's city code, they just have a line that says to refer to the state code for it. So that's one option, but um, Portland specifically controls it. Um, so if we have multiple options, do you, that's a conversation for you guys to have as the city. Um, do you take control completely of the rent instead of rent cap? Or do you refer to the state or to the federal laws that exist right now?
So you're not asking for us to take more government control over the people then?
I guess not because it hasn't worked before. It's that's sort of the point that I was making in my last two, but at this point, you guys have uh, started something to move that direction with the housing advisory committee. And so eventually, if that is the decision you make to take control of rent and set something up, great. If it's to refer to the state uh, statutes and enforce the state statute, great. But that's up to you guys as the council. I'm just here to present that and my opinion. Uh, because I really do love this community and I've grown here over the past four and a half years. I don't want to leave, but I might have to because with my current income, my options are low income housing, a hotel or um, moving home probably to my parents in Texas, which currently as a queer person and somebody who is non-binary. Texas is not safe for me. The specific request for their LGBTQ-friendly statutes and goals is safe for me. So this comes down to now, in my view and my perception of things, my safety as a queer person and as a, like just as a person who's existing in the world, who does not conform to society norms. So, yeah. But it doesn't just affect me, it affects our entire community. We have a lot of migrant workers who may or may not be affected by things. We have a lot of businesses who may or may not be affected by things. One thing that comes right off the top of my head is if the fort loses funding because of the curbing levels with Senator or with Representative Smith and all of that stuff that's going on. If they lose money, they're going to have people who lose jobs, who might have to move into other housing that costs less, because now their new job doesn't pay them as much, because they either had a lower starting rate because they had to start over or they just found a completely other job because that was what's available to them.
Another follow-up question. So with your research that you've been doing, is it feasible, so if the, if the city puts it, so if the city chooses just to say, we're going to keep the status quo like what the city's been doing, then the owners who then rent can have no caps of where they can, there's no legal guidelines that they have to follow?
So that's Boris, that part of the state.
You were talking about that, right? So they do have something to follow, but would it be more teeth if the city was to say that they, the people who rent have to follow that?
Yes, it would, it would be more teeth for them to have to follow that. Currently, the rent cap only applies to properties that are fifteen years past the first date of their first tenant, which Fortview and Tidewater don't hit till the 2030s. A lot of our properties, and you can see that, that's on page three in the very last column. You can see which properties qualify. So like 302 Main Street qualifies, Columbia View technically qualifies, but they're permanently closed or something. Columbia Villa, Maple Crest Apartments, 212 North West First Street, 212 Anderson. All of those apartments do fall under this page. The other part of that, Boris chapter ninety, determine, is determining like low-income housing stipulations and what qualifies a place to have that and what those stipulations require, because those are typically tied to income per family. So like if you look at Casa Rock Apartments, their rent is determined by family size and income. The Morrow County bunkhouse, which I haven't found any information on, it's listed though in the Affordable Housing Inventory that the state did. Morrow Estates, this is similar way, Sagebrush is kind of that way. And then the Boardman Trails Apartments that are getting put in, that are taking applications currently, which is somewhere that I'm currently looking at, they're also based on income. For those applications, you do have to submit like your banking information, loan stuff, like a whole bunch of information so that they can determine what level rent you're paying.
Are you currently working with the housing group? Even though you're not on the committee? You were recommended to be on the committee?
Yes, I was, yeah.
And if, I would highly suggest that you keep working with them.
Yeah.
And I mean, not to say that don't work with us, but with your passion, that might be a really good avenue, because we're going to take a lot of information from them to help us make decisions on how to go with housing.
Yeah, so Mr. Wildfire does have copies of these reports and we've been in contact, but continuing. I have any questions? I was much less fired today than I need to be. Oh, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bus. All right, everybody can see the VCDA committee report, that's communication. So we'll go to action items, resolutions, resolution eight dash twenty-five, R O W fees.
So this is just attaching the fees to the right-of-way ordinance that was passed last?
Last month.
Last month. So these fees are the same exact that they are currently being charged?
And again, it's transitioning from a franchise system to a wideway license system. And so we looked at what the current franchise fees are. Also looked at what some of the limitations are, like for communications, there are some federal limits about what you can do. Those are incorporated into that. And then there is an application fee component that's included. And then the constructor right, the construct and the right-of-way permit fee is also identified in there.
And if there is a current company or, thank you, franchise agreement, that, that still is in effect, right?
Right, this doesn't eliminate the franchise fees that are agreements that are in effect. So as those terminate or expire, then those companies would come under the right-of-way license process. We'll have our first getting pick here very soon, yes.
Motion.
I'm approving resolution eight dash two thousand twenty-five, a resolution adopting fees pursuant to the Boardman Municipal Code, Chapter twelve point sixteen, utility use of the rights of way.
Second, a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Resolution nine dash twenty-two-five, establishing park facility rental fees.
So when we took over the, the park maintenance from park district, we, we didn't have a fee scheduled for that. This is the same exact fee scheduled that the park and rec districts used. This is the only one we really do is the pavilion. So this is same exact that they were charging.
Do you have someone that's going to be in charge of that here as a staff helper that the people will call and they'll do the paperwork?
Yeah, we have it, we'll, as soon as you guys pass this, we'll put it on the website and we have a shloon already that Amanda created, so.
Do you have a way to enforce it?
Yeah, I mean, yes, the same way that we did. I mean, the only reason that people would rent it is because they get, they want it for sure. No one has to, but you don't, you're not guaranteed to have it. If someone comes and rents it, that's your guarantee.
Or if you're there and somebody says, I rented it, you're going to move it.
Then yes, then they would, they would contact the city and I, you know.
You're talking about the pavilion at the city park?
Right.
Yeah.
Wouldn't most of the rentals be on the weekend?
And it would, and again, Norma would be the co-partner.
Oh, she's the contact person?
She, she would on the weekends, but that, that's the, where the emergency or it go to PD and PD, I mean, because that's who they call. And then it would go to Norma, yeah. So yeah, and we have on-call staff too with public works, but generally it's going to be handled by Maria in the office.
So is there a certain time limit or is it seventy-five for the entire day?
It says seventy-five per day.
Yeah. So it's the entire day that you're going to answer the owner?
And this is mimicking how the park and rec districts have been practicing.
Yeah, we need to make adjustments, but, but we have someone who wants to rent it now.
All right, well, then I move that we passed a resolution, city of Boardman, resolution nine dash twenty-two-five, a resolution establishing a park facility rent. I second that.
Motion, a second, is there any discussion?
So to clarify, so the fees that are collected will go towards what?
The park maintenance.
And that park maintenance is, say personally, doesn't own the city grass?
It's our public works.
They do it all.
Our public works does it all?
Yeah.
Okay, so never, never going out for something?
So this rental fee will nowhere near cover.
Public works doesn't do that, we have a contractor that.
Oh, the mower, no, but the, the maintenance of the pavilion, the garbage, that all of that is public works. So this rental fee is nowhere touching what it's costing us to do just regular maintenance, let alone repairs.
And fifty dollars is?
The cleaning deposit.
Yeah, so if it's clean, they give the fifty dollars back.
Of their seventy-five?
Seventy-five is one fifty plus.
Is that what that really says?
Yes.
It says a hundred and twenty-five dollars to reserve that.
I ask if that's what it really says.
Oh.
Says city park permit, seventy-five per day, refundable cleaning deposit fifty, so there's two separate fees.
How would I know that?
Written.
Well, I, if I read that.
We'll, we'll help clarify it.
I didn't say you're going to owe me seventy-five dollars plus fifty, so come with a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Then if you clean it up, I'll give you fifty back.
Yes.
Does it say that?
No, it just says refundable cleaning deposit fifty dollars.
I know what it says.
We have it covered on our form that they're going to have to fill out, because we're going to want contact information. That will be on the form, and then when they come and pay, Maria will explain that as well as her paying for it.
So have you thought about like the music and how long it lasts and all? And I know we've got rules in town.
Yeah.
But when you rent that,
it states it on the form, okay?
It actually.
So you should have maybe attached the form to this resolution, so I would have known that.
The, the rules, the rules that are attached that the park had was no music, no live music, no bands, no DJs, no glass. Those are all the rules that were already attached to the park rental.
I'm sorry, I don't care what was already done. I'm ready to make a new rule that I don't know what the rule is.
Yeah, yeah.
But isn't this, this is just for park facility rental fees. It's not the contract. This is just, I, I know where you're getting at, but if, but to establish the park rental fees, I think this does a very good job on how much it's going to cost to rent it.
Yeah, and I don't want to tie an application cross, I mean, application to a resolution per se and make adjustments as needed.
But however, if we wanted to talk about the policy, I think that would be
Oh, yeah.
More than on the, on the what they can and can't do, I think that is correct discussing.
Correct.
So Amanda, putting the cost into the resolution, isn't that what we've just tried to hear? Or is that what we're going to?
There is a statement on here that says upon creation of a master fee schedule, these fees will be incorporated and then maintained as part of that master fee schedule. So we have to establish them before we can add them to the master fee schedule.
Well, obviously not, because it's seven hundred and eighty.
And we did that in that last resolution too, if I remember right. We had that same line about we're establishing the fees, but in the future they will be in a master fee schedule. So we're trying to get there.
Do you have any other concerns?
No. I just don't think that that fifty dollars is clear enough.
Would, would you like to see a line and then one twenty-five underneath of it?
No, what I'd like to see is somewhere it says that if you'll be charged and you, if you, that it's refundable. Make the motion and I'm going to vote yes for it.
The motion has been made.
Yeah, I was going to say, we're in discussion.
Any other discussion? I'm glad you're down there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks Karen. Actually, it's Mr. Pedigree, don't like calling me Karen. Even though that's your name. All right, other public comment. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings, and our council strongly takes community input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon open meeting laws, this isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city manager will direct staff to follow up with you regarding your comments or questions. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing is on due date. Yeah, each person has three minutes, but you, you have, there's nobody after you. When your name is called, proceed to the podium and speak calmly into the microphone. Begin by stating your name and address, and then express your view or offer your suggestion in a courteous and considerate manner. Remember to direct all remarks and questions to the council through the mayor. It is not appropriate to address the audience or the staff directly.
Mayor Cooper, before we complete you, we have gone past nine o'clock, so we will need to extend the meeting, if you so choose.
Yeah, we're going to probably, we'll need to extend the meeting because we have an executive session.
Can we have a five-minute recess?
How about we let Vino go first and then go five minutes?
Okay.
Surely, name Vino Layton, live at three oh four Northwest Boardman Avenue. About a year ago, I went to the planning commission and I was trying to get a container in the C and E and my house. You know, I don't want to put it in the C and E, it's an ice water. You know, people are going to be tagging it, and then it takes all my parking spots. Anyway, I have yet to see any thing done on this thing. Nothing's been done. I mean, it's been brought to the city council three or four times and it's been sent back to the planning commission. I mean, when's it going to get talked about, you know? I mean, something has to be decided someday, you know? I'm, I'm, I don't know what to do, you know, I just run out of patience. I mean, I, I've been pretty patient, you know, and nothing's been done. And I, I just don't understand, you know, it just, it just don't click in my head why nothing's been done about it. I don't even know if you guys have talked about it or, you know, and you talked about it a little bit, you said it back by the commission, but nothing's been brought back, you know? But I just, I don't know, I'm just dumbfounded. You know, and I guess that's all I got to say. I just, I just don't understand why it can't get done, you know? I guess that's politics, I guess, huh?
Well, and, and just I would continue to have you keep working with Mr. Hammond. To, that, that's about all I can really say, is just keep working with Mr. Hammond on trying to, yeah, your concerns. Because I think, I think he's the one that can really be a degenerate or try to help, help us get through this. I appreciate your comments.
Yeah. Great.
All right, for five minutes, we'll take a, we'll take a five-minute break. And then when we come back, be ready, we're not going to go individually through the reports. If you have any questions on the reports, feel free to ask a question. If we have no questions or after the questions are done, we'll go right into executive session. Okay, here I resume the city council meeting. Is there any questions about our reports from our leadership department, city, that? That you have for that?
You talking just reports right now?
Yeah, we're in the reports and corresponding discussion. If anyone has any questions specifically to one of the department heads or departments.
I kind of do. Somebody asked me today about grass that grows between the gutter system and the street. Does the city maintenance crews come around and spray for any of that to keep from destroying roads?
Now, are the bio swells?
No. Streets and our, we have a gutter system that
Oh, rainwater?
Or be?
You're talking about the concrete gutter?
Yes, the concrete gutter, it, well, it's just a, it's a slope like this.
Swell, it's a ribbon curb.
Thank you. And it butts up against the asphalt, and where it does, grass is growing.
Oh.
Hello.
Stuck around just for this question, but.
You're on quite down, buddy.
I mean, we, our crew is running around, they're checking the.
No, I mean, we, our crews has run around, they're checking the streets and the gutters and and today we had a we had a storm rain that. A vehicle hit at an weird angle and it popped it up and we gotta call it, it was up and Heather called that in, thank you. Um, and we ran out there and got it put back into place and so as far as the the grass is up growing that. We don't do any spraying in the city, we do that in the contract up through the county, um but I don't think that they're doing road edges like that. So I guess I would have to see the instance, like the address or a street that I can go look at, that's true. So I get a better idea of maybe if there's something abandoned.
You know, when you live in a place a long time, you don't always know the names of the streets. So I apologize.
Driving around looking for streets that I didn't know existed.
What I suggested to these residents was that they call the city and ask the city, since they were city streets. But I would have to look to see what the street names are, I don't know, sure.
Yeah, and it's almost one of those property owner concepts. I mean, I don't. I don't know if the city could chase down all of that depending on the.
Well, this is in the road. This is in the streets.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's grass growing in the street.
Well, so there's a crack between a gutter and the road and everywhere there's a crack, there's gonna be grass, but.
I know we don't, I I don't know if they ever have Karen, have they ever sprayed?
But the thing is, if you don't do something about it, it ruins your pavement. I mean.
A lot of cities do do that kind of spraying. I don't know what.
But I don't think we ever have, we would be.
The city has done on city owned properties.
Yes.
You know.
Right, already, yes.
Center circle, usually the property owners are supposed to maintain in front of the house like they are supposed to the sidewalk. And so that's who usually does it, is the property.
And you wanna be a neighbor to me because when I have round up left, I go all the way until it's empty.
And it goes into the drain and the river.
And you're getting a new. And you're getting a new neighbor, so they'd be happy. All right.
But yeah, still haven't contacted the city.
I suggest you go pick it out.
Well, you suggest all you want, that's probably not happening.
Usually usually spring grasses are dead before middle May and they're no longer an issue. It's not, it's not like it's a lawn grass, it's it's a weed.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
In the in the dry season, they generally kind of shrivel up in the winter. It looks like it's encroaching and breaking up the asphalt.
Well, and not all roads are made the same, some of them are thinner.
I have a crop of grass that I'm jealous of, my yard is jealous of. But I know in three weeks it's gonna be brown and then it's gonna be gone and my grass will be green. So it's just kind of the area you live in, there's there's different different grasses that are. Really different colors and that early spring grass looks really nice until it doesn't.
And this is um the council.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just had a couple. Um, one, um. Um, this would be for for Mr. Hammond. I think um just in the interest of time, when we're looking at scheduling for the. The city council meetings, um if it looks like this is a lot, because I feel like there was a lot of presentations that I. I wanna be able to dedicate that time and then also if we have executive sessions, just maybe plan it out where like. Maybe not all in the same night. I know we only meet once a month, but just to maybe think about that, so that we can get to some of the the reports. And then the other piece um is um I was. Um, driving around Boardman and there's a lot of the undeveloped land. Um, that just collects a lot of garbage. And I know we have, we probably have a um cleanup day that will be coming, but. I was thinking that some of that probably needs to fall back on the actual owners as well. They're not gonna develop and they're not going to sell or. Whatever the case might be, that there should be some of that responsibility on their end as well to to making sure that looks clean.
And I'd be curious what the, I know, I know they do weed control and we've always done that and every vacant lot has to do the. Yeah, the swab, I what is the garbage, because again, there's been some that obviously. Decades have collected.
I don't know whether it just is more noticeable this year for some reason.
You've seen it too.
Oh, well, because I was just thinking, okay, I was thinking about calling Mr. Moore and saying I've got a hundred bucks. What's it gonna, how much, how much garbage can I get picked up from this corner? Do it for a hundred bucks worth and see what I get.
Or find out how many seniors still need volunteer hours, because I know there's a few.
So my my question would be, and I've discussed, I've talked to Brandon a little bit about this before and you make a good point is. If I'm the homeowner and the landowner, so I own my house, I gotta maintain that and the sidewalk.
And the street.
Okay, and the street, okay? I I go to the dump on a regular basis because the wind blows here a little bit, okay? Um, why aren't the massive blight of land that has been here since forever? In all the same locations, not ever responsible for cleaning up their property? I mean, when I was a kid, we lived off of Anderson and we walked through there, okay? And there was always garbage there. No one ever picked it up. And it was just, you know, here's the deal with with the way fire season has been going in our state. Okay, it's only gonna take once, one fire there, right in the middle of that, and it's gonna be out of control. And and the people that live on Anderson that have very old homes there, it's gonna get gone just like that. Yes, and 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 that, you know, I'm not saying that that. It could happen. Like, I've I've lived here long enough to remember when we looked out the window one night and um. My kids like, why is it all orange over there? And the first thing I thought was this entire field was on fire. It ended up being bombing range instead. Point was, it was working its way this way and that was fifteen years ago, so it can happen.
Yeah, and and again, that's what the the fire break is supposed to mitigate that, but when we talk about the trash.
I mean, I like cleaning up our town just as anybody else, but when's the landowner gonna take responsibility? And there are other people here that are responsible, like that had lots that they owned and they mowed it. And they maintained it and took care of it. But I don't know if these have ever been cleaned by a landowner ever.
Yeah, I know.
I know that I've spent a lot of time going along in front of it and picking up garbage.
And that's it, that's always in.
But, I mean, I've been here forty years and I've never seen a landowner go out there and mow it down, take care of it, get rid of the sagebrush, nothing.
We, okay, all I know is. We we used to send out notices and I know you still do that, you know, you've got to do the. Fire burn, the oil molder, the whole thing. But you have to consider the fact that some of these lots. Are better off having sagebrush on them than having dirt on them.
Oh.
Yes, because if you think you're gonna get complaints now about sagebrush, it's nothing like when the wind blows twenty miles an hour. I think part of what we're I'm seeing so much is that businesses. Are not closing their garbage cans. And if the wind's blowing thirty, I'm sorry, I can't have my garbage can lid up. And blame it onto the next business that's in the same area I'm in.
Yeah, I would think that all of that would be in the in the code.
Is there something that we can put on the water bill that says, hey, it's high wind season, check your can?
Every every bill, every bill. I've been seeing it every month.
Well. Maybe we could target some months, like maybe April, since we're, you know, doing it coming up in April or maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I have a comment.
We'll look into that.
Uh, so um it probably kind of goes along the lines of uh what Vino kind of talked about, you know? Storage containers have been brought up, where are we at on that sort of deal? So I have somebody at home that is in dire need of finding out about chickens. And so um.
Yeah, I've been.
Just something.
Lots of those.
Something, so that when I go home tonight, I kind of might get some dinner. Cause that's, I called to ask about something and she literally says, have you brought up the chicken thing? Well. That has i- is anything said? I can have a chicken. Okay.
In your house?
Get yourself a chicken because it's gonna happen. Yes, okay. And I'm gonna have a real hard time seeing somebody, oh, you can't have a chicken there.
Yeah, the the one, the one difficulty with the with the chickens are killing them.
Yes.
Yep, and what are we doing with all the loose chi- I mean, it really is when we're doing it. And transition to a new code and 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 honestly, like Carla has so. Like there, there's a ton that she doing, because the the storage containers coming, I mean. It is just a matter of going to the, I mean, it's physically done.
Well, we we know, based on the last presentation, we know we're gonna draw from the city of Planet Falls. We need to draft the proposed language incorporated into our code and move it through the process, but you know, the staff that's assigned to is. Having surgery tomorrow, so you know, it's kind of.
But it really is, it's going to the planning commission.
So chickens.
And and chickens, it definitely gets me, so I have I have pulled back because there's so much going on and I ended. Like the code enforcement stuff and I don't wanna do it.
Just another note, you've already missed chicks season because they aren't selling.
Oh, perfect.
Right.
Thank you. Season's over, I'm sorry, Seth, we told that.
I would, I would ask, I would, on the chicken one, I would take a straw poll, a straw poll. If you guys had a chicken ordinance in front of you, I I don't wanna do the work if you're gonna not vote yes. So if if we did a straw poll, would a chicken ordinance pass? Should I do the work?
So.
I would pass it. I gotta yes, I gotta yes, I gotta yes.
Talk about this when it's on your agenda.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, yeah.
You're gonna get.
Well, this this is actually the, well, that straw poll that it's kind of a council comment.
Um, I had a question, does anybody happen to know about the Easter egg hunts? When it's happening, Sunday.
Send me a picture of the layer I have on my table.
Thank you, so that I can take it back to the people who are asking you about Easter egg hunts.
That's why I have them.
Oh, sweet.
Any other sounds?
Looks like ten AM.
Yeah, I thought it was ten AM, but I wasn't. But I'll take a flyer to that.
Okay. Word to city council will now meet an executive session pursuant to O R S one ninety two point six six zero two E. Which allows the council to have an executive session to consider real estate. Uh, we're gonna invite Marta in to with us, you are invited. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed. To attend the executive session in person. Public virtual Zoom meeting link will now be closed during the executive session. As permissible, executive session meetings are not subject to H B two five six zero. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these. Subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No date, decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session. Executive session is expected to last less than fifteen minutes, to the length of fifteen minutes. And action is planned after we resume the council meeting. Thanks for speaking in. Hey, we'll resume our city council meeting uh after our executive session. Is there a decision that needs to be made?
Yes, I move to authorize city manager Hammond to continue with potential property purchase negotiations and performance development analysis on properties located. At four N twenty five B zero nine D A lots eight hundred, one hundred, one oh one and four N. Twenty five B sixteen B lots four oh one and four oh two.
All right, uh motion and a second, is there any additional discussion that we'd like to have at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, give me a pose. Okay, meeting is adjourned.